Hey there, everybody. It's Christopher with Mid Bay News. We are in the beginning of election season and to celebrate the reason for the season, we're going to be talking to local candidates for the two big races that are local here in Okaloosa County that are going to take place in August. So that's school board race District Two and Okaloosa County Commission Race District Three. Those are both in the primary vote that's going to take place in August. And with me today, I have Parker Destin, who is one of the candidates running for school board District Two. And so Parker, if you would, without any further ado, tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Parker Destin. I am a lifelong resident of Destin, Florida, Okaloosa County, born and raised. I went to school from kindergarten through 12th grade here, graduated from Walton Beach High School. I left and went to school, got an undergraduate degree at the University of Tampa in business. Then I got lost along the way and became a lawyer thereafter and practiced for about six years. Came home and practiced for a while and then had an opportunity to get back into the restaurant business. I never really left the restaurant business, but I'm back in it. Starting around 2018, we opened up another location at Dewey's over in Navarre, Florida. And along with my food truck, my wife and I started another business, Pink Coyote Ice Cream Dessert Company, and that's been doing really well. We've been working on that for the last several years. The brick and mortar location of that one is going to open up in Fort Walton, probably middle of summer this year. You know, knock on wood. And I'm a former member of the Destin City Council. I served for four years from about 2016 to 2020. That was a great experience. It was a all volunteer gig, but we righted the ship on overgrowth and development in Destin. You know, we had 20 straight years of just probably proven more stuff than we really could handle in Destin. It was time for a change. And me and a young cohort of other folks got on council and we slowed things down to a more responsible pace of growth and development that has put us on a better trajectory moving forward so that we don't choke on our own success, so to speak. And those debates are happening all over the county right now, as you know. I'm sure you guys are covering some of the discussions that are happening in the North End. I've been on a bunch of appointed boards. I most recently have served the Senate President as one of her members on the Florida Historical Commission. I would suggest that personally, I am passionate about collecting Florida history and cataloging it. My wife might characterize it as obsessive, but she's really understanding. And so, I mean, serving on that board has been the most fun I've been able to have in government. My mother's a lifelong educator. She served in the district for 33 years as a first grade teacher. My dad served on school board in, I want to say about 2012 to 2020. So that was a little bit several years ago. And so in that regard, I would say, you know, education is in my blood. I care deeply about what happens in our community. I have previously served in some of the municipal capacities and some of the state appointed roles. And I have come back consistently to being worried and concerned about whether or not we're really educating children, whether we're getting distracted by a bunch of political noise, on whether we're really moving the ball forward, the needle forward in Okaloosa County on education. You know, we're doing really well. I'm not saying that to say, oh, our hair's on fire in Okaloosa County schools, because we really do have a great school system. And it doesn't take very, you know, go to your left, go to your right, east, west, you know, things are not as good in Okaloosa, as it is in Okaloosa County. So, but we could do better. There's always room to improve. We're number, we're in the top 10% from an academic standpoint out of 67 Florida counties, but we're dead last in one category, and that's the average age of our infrastructure. Now, the half cent sales tax has gone a long way to improve that. And we're going to continue to support that and move the ball forward. But I'd like to see us make some headway on catching up on 30 years worth of deferred maintenance. I want to make sure that we make the investments in the North End that are gonna, that are already necessary, but are going to be even more so as the North End continues to grow, because that's where all the available land is going to be. And as soon as you develop it, you build a home, you sell it, those kids are gonna, that family's gonna come in and enroll those kids in the district shortly thereafter. So we need to be ready for all of that. And I can't tell you how excited I am to run. The response so far has been really, really great. I'm a pretty moderate, reasonable guy, I'd like to think. So I have some curb appeal to a lot of folks, but I'm a businessman first and foremost, from the private sector, and I'm hoping to bring that voice in particular to the school district, because the biggest responsibility that the district has, that school board in particular, is balancing that, you know, over $500 million annual budget, prioritizing it, balancing it and making sure that we don't waste the money. And you really, really do need a private sector perspective to be on that board, and I'm hoping to bring that. I think the voters so far have been really responsive to that. So, you know, we're swinging for the fences and working really hard, door knocking, making sure we get our message out there to people. So folks are going to see a lot more of me coming up real soon.
What is, what do you see the position's responsibilities as? So, you know, there's state statute, but what do you see the responsibilities of the position to be? What is most important?
The most important role is to, one, and I'm a lawyer first and foremost. So if you go back and just read the Constitution, you read the state statute, the roles of the school board are very specific. You're balancing the budget. And that is the power of the purse, so to speak. It's like Congress. That's why the power of Congress, it's the power to spend the money. And that's where the power really lies. And that's why it's so spread out and fragmented. And that's why the framers set it up that way. Same thing in the Florida Constitution with regards to legislature. Same thing at the next level down, where you have five members, not just one, not the superintendent, but you have five members that spreads out the responsibility of the most important role of the school district, which is to balance and prioritize that massive budget. Because when you and I go and pay our property taxes every year and you go look down the itemized list, the number one category that we spend and put money into of that large bill is the school district. So frankly, it's the budget, making sure that we live within our means, that we're protecting the taxpayers' money. That's the real big role. Now, also statutorily, you work in conjunction with the school superintendent to develop school board policy. And that's why it's important to have educators on that board so that they understand in the development process, what's going to work, what hasn't worked in the past. It's really good to have educators on the board in that regard. We have, right now, out of five members, we have four former educators. So if I go onto the board, it would probably be more like three educators, two from the private sector. And that's a pretty good balance, I think. So the biggest one is to make sure that you live within your means and you stretch every dollar and you don't waste anything.
So to discuss that a little bit further, what about you makes you the best candidate for the job? I know you've kind of hit on it a little bit, but just in explicit terms, what makes you the man for the job?
I think probably the fact is, the school district, in addition to educating our children, is an institution that has 3,500 employees. It has 37,000 students. That's over 70,000 parents. You, these, this is a massive human organization with a lot of money involved. And frankly, you need to have real life experience with dealing with complex, large organizations. My businesses that I have been responsible for and operate, we have over 150 employees. We have gross sales well into the millions on all of our locations. You have to have a familiarity with people, politics, internal organizational politics, and the Shutzpah to do the things that are difficult, like terminations, like saying, hey, listen, I know we've got an endless list of wants, but we only have so much money. So how are we going to prioritize the list of needs versus what we can afford? And sometimes things don't always make the list. And you have, you cannot be a Pollyanna in business, because if you overspend, you go out of business. And the same is true, should be true in government. Now, those backstops of going out of business don't exist in government, but we need it to not be in a deficit. You need just clear-eyed, sober-as-a-judge sort of decision-making with results-oriented goals when you're making those decisions that come from business experience. And I'm the candidate that offers that.
So speaking of Pollyanna, you can't have everything. So what are the accomplishments or the check-offs on your to-do list that you want to have done if you were to get a first term in office?
So, trying to be a straight shooter, and that's what you have to be in business. You have certain types of restrictions on certain types of money that come in. They're called categoricals. So when money comes in from the state, it can only be used for certain things, like capital improvements or personnel, and you cannot mix those pots of money. So I say, you know, in a perfect world, I can list out everything that we need to accomplish. And it's going to be difficult, because you've got an over $500 million annual budget, and 89% of that, the overwhelming lion's share, is just payroll. That's just to pay the 3,500 employees, make sure that they get their benefits. We have payroll tax matching, just like any private employer does. The humans are expensive. You need the humans, because frankly, if you have a school district without humans, what do you really have? Some old decaying buildings, that's it. So the people are the biggest resource, but they are also the biggest expense. So what do we do with that 11% leftover? Well, luckily, we now have the half-cent sales tax money coming in, and there's more of it that's coming in than we anticipated and forecast, which is great. We need to make sure that we continue catching up on the deferred maintenance from 30 years, basically just putting Band-Aids on old buildings. I may have mentioned it before, we're in the top 10% academically, but we're dead last in the average age of our building infrastructure. And it's because we just didn't collect enough money over the last 30 years to sink it into new buildings and keeping up with the maintenance. And some of it was big stuff, you know, roofs, HVAC, HVAC in Florida, right? Why did that, why did that get, you know, kind of kicked? Well, they're really, to refrigerate an entire building like Crestview High School, it's a massive HVAC system that if you want to replace it, it's millions of dollars. So where is that just magically going to come from? We have half-cent sales tax money. We're going to continue using it to catch up on what's been deferred. We're going to move the ball forward on multipurpose facilities. We're going to make sure that we're retiring all the portables. There is no reason that portables need to be in this county any longer. And we're going to make sure that we bring as many resources to bear to figure out how we're going to deal with high school capacity in Crestview. And whether that is in the form of expanding the footprint of Crestview High School, going vertical and figuring out how to put more kids in the same package there, or does it look more like doing a second facility? Politics is already talking about that right now, but we're going to, either way, we're going to have to move the ball forward, because we're already over capacity. So some decisions are going to have to get made. So I'm dedicated to making sure that whatever gets prioritized, that's at the top of the list. Figuring out one of Crestview's biggest hurdles, which is they've got more growth and more people, and they don't have enough school facilities to support them, especially on the secondary education, high school front.
Can we do that without raising property taxes, or is that something we're going to have to look at?
Well, it depends on what you prioritize and what you want. I think if you put that at number one, we can afford it. We have to. You know, the trouble we have with touching property taxes in Okaloosa County in particular is they are already high. The problem is, we have fewer people and fewer, and less private property than our adjacent counties to generate that tax revenue for the size of a district and the size of the student body that we have. And the reason that, you know, well, what's missing? Half the county, from a taxing standpoint, which is the federal government owns the majority of the land in Okaloosa County, and that cannot be taxed for school purposes. Yet, the mission brings in thousands and thousands of people through DoD personnel and their contractors who live in our community and they attend our schools. So it is a double-edged sword. I mean, those people are fantastic. They have stable home lives. They're engaged in their students, and their student, and their, excuse me, in their children's student academic performance. And so we get better academic outcomes, but we're short-changed, kind of like having to fight a boxing match with one arm tied behind your back, because from a financial standpoint, we're trying to do everything with half the money. So to make up the difference, we would have to raise taxes a significant amount. And they're just, they're already burdensome on the working class people who make up the electorate of this county. So we're going to have to figure out how to do it another way. And a lot of it's just going to be eating the elephant one bite at a time, which is slower. But it is mindful of the fact that you just can't say, oh, let's build everything, let's do it all at once. And oh, by the way, your school portion of the tax bill just doubled. It's just, it's not feasible. It's not protecting, it's not protecting folks. And we can do it. We just have to list in the priorities what we're going to do and how we're going to do it over time.
So on the note, you said 89%, right, of the total budget is payroll. What would you do in terms of teacher pay increases remaining competitive against other school districts to keep teachers? Would you, do you see a pay rise that's above cost of living in the next couple of years?
So we have to work, there's two reasons that, there's two reasons that teachers are leaving the profession. One, they're not getting paid enough. And two, they're not getting paid enough to get screamed at for being responsible or the scapegoat for every societal problem we're mad about, left, on the left or on the right, to just load up on these teachers' backs. So we're going to have to find out a way to pay them more. Where those efficiencies are going to come from within the district, that's going to be one of my first things that we're going to try to figure out. We have, we have the ability to reduce our litigation costs. We have the ability to go in and, once we have more money from different sources, either through half-cent and/or state money, to finance capital improvements, then that frees up general revenue budgets for paying teachers more. We have to deal with that. But also, there's these things that may not be within the purview of a school district or a school board member or the board itself to deal with, which is, parents are harder on teachers than they've ever been. That is not necessarily the school district's fault. That is expectations of the competitive nature, the hyper-competitive nature of the society we happen to live in. Most parents don't want to hear that their kids, you know, fallen behind or that their kids not doing what they're supposed to be doing. And when the teacher tries to push back and say, hey, listen, these are not being met, there's some negative proclivities for some certain parents to just attack the teachers. And you can't prevent that. However, what you can do is support and make sure that teachers understand that, hey, from an administrative, from a school district standpoint, we have your back. And that's not to say that we're going to protect bad teachers. We're not going to listen to parents, because that parental rights are exceptionally important to me and something that we have to prioritize as well. But there's a balance. But you've got to make sure that you have teachers, otherwise, you know, you don't have a district. So we're going to, we're going to work on pay and we're going to work on making sure that the teachers understand that they're supported.
The Walton County and Santa Rosa County school districts performed a little bit better on the most recent standardized testing than Okaloosa County. First question is, is that a problem? Like, does this whole standardized testing thing really even matter? And if it does, what would you do to help correct the problem?
So standardized testing is a necessary evil of the modern education system. We started shifting over to pay for performance. It was a concept that was put through the legislature in the late 90s by Jeb Bush. And there are lots of good things about pay for performance when it comes to, if you have a good school, you get more funding. If you have a bad school, you get less funding. That's a fundamental check and balance from the business sector that's being applied into schooling. But to solve one problem, the hope is you incentivize schools that are less performing to perform better. But a lot of it is always attended to resources. How do you get better teachers if you're in a poor-performing school? Well, you have to recruit them. You have to have money. Well, oh, by the way, it's a self-fulfilling prophecy. If you have a poor-performing school, you're going to get worse, in theory, if you get deprived of resources. So that's the measuring stick for whether you're a good or a bad school, is standardized testing. And because of that, now everyone in the school business is incentivized to perform as best as they can on standardized testing, rather than teaching for learning, teaching for understanding, and teaching for retention, which is, you know, the way we always did it. And unfortunately, there's some variation from year to year. And, you know, we slipped a little bit, but we can make up those differences. But there are certain things that you can accomplish as a school board member that will prioritize funding for, and development of policy to make a difference with regards to making standardized testing less of the end-all-be-all interest of the district. But you have resources that are going to come from the state, which make up a very large percentage of the annual budget that are earmarked to, that are earmarked to these performances. So standardized testing performances, and because of that, we're not going to get rid of it. It would be disingenuous for me as a candidate and then as a school board member to tell you that we're going to stop teaching to the test, that frankly, we need them to perform well on the test. However, we can't just let that be the only thing. And how we're going to cram that in, that's going to be tough. We've been trying to sort that one out for the last probably 15 to 20 years, because I can see it in our restaurants. There's a lot of kids that graduate from school and they have retained nothing. They didn't retain anything. They binged to take it in, they regurgitated on a test, and then they jettison. And then nothing's retained. And so you have kids graduating that just don't even have employable, you know, skill sets. They don't have a working knowledge of lots of practical things, which, you know, not necessarily, whether or not they can perform well in, you know, Pythagorean theorem and basically doing well on a math, on a math portion of a standardized test was going to translate to good working skills, unless you need geometry in your job. But there's lots of stuff that's happening in the district where we're just mostly warehousing kids, testing them, getting the funding, and sending them out. We have to change that. Because it's a constant thing that's being brought up to me by these parents. They're worried about it.
Absolutely. And one of the things that I was not expecting that's been brought up to me a lot is about middle school sports. And I say all that because Santa Rosa County recently got rid of middle school sports as a way to save money. And I had a conversation with the superintendent a couple of months ago. He told me, we will never get rid of middle school sports. And I guess my question to you is, middle school sports are of course an important thing, but are they so important that you would be willing to raise taxes or come up with alternative revenue streams in order to keep them long-term?
Well, I'm committed to not getting rid of middle school sports. They're important. Middle school athletics was where I met many of my best friends. And also, middle school sports was when I was at that transitional age from being an elementary school student to trying to be an early adult, when I learned a lot of my best habits, which is being where you're supposed to be when you're supposed to be there. That's dependability and accountability. Those translate into high school and college success, and of course, workforce success. I figured out how to be tenacious. You know, I swam in middle school and we would do practices nearly every day. And they were hard. They were tough. They were early in the morning. I would jump into a cold pool voluntarily, you know, voluntarily, just because I loved the sport. And in addition to meeting some of the best friends of my life, I got a lot of those sort of wherewithal, got to figure it out, push through it skills that I worry I wouldn't have received if I had waited longer after I was growing and forming into an adult, if I had waited for it to be available as a, excuse me, as a high school freshman. So, no, I'm committed to keeping it. We're going to figure out a way to fund it. We're not going to raise taxes to do it, but you've already seen it in some of the schools. Davidson, I believe, Destin Middle School, you know, some of the smaller sports that usually don't generate a whole lot of money, but they do have loyal, they do have loyal following from the fan base, their parents. They're starting to charge a little bit, small amount for admission to try to carry the freight of the cost of the programming. So we're going to do that for a long time before we ever consider getting rid of them, which I just don't think I could ever find a scenario where I would support that. But middle school sports in particular, very, very important.
Gotcha. And switching gears just a little bit to some harder policy questions, what standards would you use to determine whether or not to support banning a book or taking a book off the shelves of a library or a classroom in Okaloosa County?
Sure. So the law says that we are going to comply with any books that are flagged, and we're going to follow the law. It's as simple as that. Now, we're going to use age-appropriateness standards when applying those rules. That's what the law says we need to do, and that's what I'm interested in doing as well. If there's a, if there is a book that is flagged, we're going to review it. Can't guarantee that it'll be something that gets ultimately removed, but it's going to be on a case-by-case, fact-by-fact scenario. And I'm not scared to look at the books, but we're going to make sure age-appropriate stuff is available for kids. But we're not, we're not going to let anything bad get through.
Going to the, I guess, the guts of school board policy. One of the policies that I've noticed just as a journalist is that when employees are suspended or terminated, they're referred to in board agendas by their employee ID as opposed to names. Do you favor that practice and why or why not?
So here's the trouble. It depends on, again, going back to the legal issue. One, one of the biggest frustrations parents come to me and talk about is they go, so-and-so at this school got suspended, and they're not telling us anything. Well, there's a reason that you're not told anything, because frankly, due process and privacy is paramount to be protected, because allegations are allegations until they're substantiated through investigation and then through, in the normal process of a criminal analysis, then you have a trial and then you have a conviction. That's why there's a presumption of innocence until proven guilty, because in human society, and ours is no exception, the court of public opinion wants to draw and quarter everybody, first and foremost, as soon as the allegation is out there. And what if it is false? What if it is not accurate? And that's why, until there is an investigation, a fact-gathering process, that we don't say anything to the public until we have more to say. Now, that is important to maintain. I support that. But after that point, if you are found to have done something wrong and you're being terminated, you know, that's only an employee number, only a, only some sort of cryptic reference to why somebody's being fired. If the law says we have to do that, I'm not familiar with it. And more so, it feels as though that the district would be doing that simply to avoid the public circus that could follow the termination of someone. Now, I'm not interested in frankly, I'm pro-transparency. And if people are upset and someone has been terminated because of, for cause, you know, just trying to avoid some sort of public review and oversight of that process by using employee ID numbers or something like that, you know, unless it's required by the law, I'm not scared of transparency and open government. Let's send it out there. People want to know, and they have at that point the right to know, without there being undue damage to the institution or the people who have been let go. Because if you did your investigation and they're being let go, then that's that.
So for everybody at home, we just had some technical difficulties. It's all good. That's why you're seeing my head jump like this immediately in the middle of an interview. So we'll get back to our final question. Our final question being that there are a lot of charge symbols in our culture just generally. And some of those, so for example, pride flags or Confederate flags or any sort of symbols that have charge meaning behind them. There's been a big discussion about whether or not these symbols should be allowed in schools. And my question to you is, as a school board member, do you support allowing those kinds of symbols in schools? And then why or why not? And then finally, as a school board member, what would you do to enforce policy or create policy that would achieve your objective?
So that is one of the most complicated questions to answer, because it's the intersection of First Amendment rights. It's the intersection of politics and whether or not they are going to be present in schools. And it's also the intersection of how many distractions can we have within the schools that could interfere with the learning environment? And so there is a whole host of constitutional law that has dealt with the charged political environments and then how it ends up permeating schools since the 1970s. The Vietnam War era generated a ton of Supreme Court cases trying to construe how much of a student's First Amendment rights to free speech and free expression are sort of shed or left at the schoolhouse gate when they go inside. And so there are restrictions on how much political discourse can occur from any student during this, during class time, because political discourse is distracting and it can interfere with the learning process. And so long as quiet symbols are not distracting, they are somewhat allowed. And I think that was a court, I think that was a, that was a case with regards to somebody in the Vietnam War. There was a student that was wearing an armband. And then there was, there was another case where a student was interrupting class to protest the Vietnam War, and that was not allowed. And so it's a very, very fraught area to try to regulate people's free expression. Now, it bumps up into the issue of how much expression can we allow versus distraction? And I can't tell you, sitting here today, it's a case-by-case basis. You know, folks showing up with the Confederate flag, if it's during a history course, and, you know, even then, it's so divisive. It's so distracting. I can't see where most of these symbols and a lot of this discourse has any place in the learning environment without there being repercussions and fallback, or blowback, excuse me, on the ability for these kids on the ability for these kids to learn and for these teachers to teach. So we need to be mindful of whatever we're going to regulate, that we are doing so from a, from a, from a place that, hey, listen, political discourse can and should happen so long as it's in the right areas without interfering with the main primary directive and goal of the school district, which is teaching. You know, talking about the Confederacy during history class, that's appropriate. Talking about, you know, gay pride symbols and gay folks during history, when we talk about some of the progress that was made in the 1960s and 70s with regards to civil rights within the LGBTQ community in their history course, it's appropriate. But to try to turn the schools inside out for certain students that just want to make it a political soapbox, you know, we can't do that. We have to be educating these students, and as much of the turmoil of modern politics that can be kept out of schools, that's what the direction we need to go in, and that's what I support. It's gonna be difficult. I don't have, I don't have a, a, a golden bullet sort of, sort of stumping point that could tell you this is the way to solve it, but we need to be leaning towards calming down things in the school and keeping folks focused on learning rather than just the political turmoil that exists outside the four corners of our schools.
So you're telling me you can't solve it in a 15-second soundbite?
I can't. I wish I could, but I promise you, it's gonna be something we're gonna have to delve in, but it's gonna be on a case-by-case basis.
So I've asked you a ton of questions, and I, I think I should give you some time on the floor to talk about either more about yourself, or about this race, or about what you see more generally. Is there anything that people watching this need to know about Parker? Or about his policy thoughts, or anything in general?
Yeah, I, I really, really do deeply care about the students in our district. I'm a, I'm a product of the Okaloosa County school system. I've been successful, completely attributable to the education that I received, the mentors I had, and, and the teachers that led me along this process in my life. It was the foundation for everything. I did well in college and in law school from that foundation, and I want to serve in an effort to make sure that the students presently today get the same opportunities that I did. There are more complex and difficult problems to solve today than there were in the past, but you need young, energetic, private-sector voices that are gonna say, hey, listen, I don't care what it takes. I'll lay down in traffic for these kids to fight for them, make sure that they've got a brighter future ahead of them, because at the end of the day, all of us are simply stewards of our community. And this is my time to serve. You're at an age where you're serving, and that's sort of the process. We gotta, we gotta step up and look after everything, because there is a next crop of, of folks that need us to look after them, just in the same that the, that the older generation looked after us. And so in, in that role, I cannot wait to get in there and start swinging for the fences in every way that I think I can make a difference.
Thank you so much for joining us today and being a part of this. If you want more information about all the candidates, midbaynews.com/elections is the place to go. We have full candidate bios, more videos like this, and everything else you'd ever want to know in one place, so you don't have to go look for it yourself. Trust me, it took me forever to find it. That's midbaynews.com/elections.